I'd like to call the November 20th, 2012 Longmont City Council Meeting to Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present, Councilmember Spagley.
Finley.
Here.
Levinson.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
Thank you. Let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, free and just as one.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard, on any items at the end of the meeting. We don't have any minutes to present tonight.
And for agenda revisions?
Yes.
Resolution 2012 98 is being added to the Agenda S consent to Agenda 9H, and I'll read the title of that when we get to it. It's about the conservation easement, and the materials were emailed to you on Friday for that, as well as supplemental materials for the urban renewal item 11A.
We have a proclamation designating November 20th, 2012, as a day to celebrate our center's ethical practices in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, at a time when business and nonprofits throughout the country are under increased scrutiny and competition for funding, it is vital that organizations demonstrate impeccable character and integrity. And whereas Better Business Bureau of Denver/Boulder recently chose the R Center as the winner of the prestigious Torch Award for Marketplace Excellence in recognition of their excellent work in ethical practices, and whereas the R Center works diligently to move people towards self-sufficiently and unifying community resources and doing the most good for the greatest number of people, and whereas in 2011, the R Center served more than 18,000 households, or nearly 43,000 people in need, by providing life-sustaining services such as food, clothing, rent vouchers, utility shutout prevention, and more, while upholding the highest ethical standards, and whereas the R Center's fair, honest ethical practice will make more community members aware that this organization is one that they can trust to do the most good with their generous donations of time, talent, and resources. Now therefore, I, NSL Coombs, mayor by virtue of the authority vested in me, and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2012, as a day to celebrate the R Center's ethical practices in Longmont. I encourage all citizens in the community to be aware of this special recognition and support of the R Center. Edwina, would you like to say something now?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the City Council. We are very happy to receive that award. We competed with 30 organizations in the Denver metro area for the Better Business Bureau Trust in Business Award for nonprofits, and I think we're the first one in Boulder County to receive the award. So we're really pleased to be selected for that and to be part of Longmont and be here in Longmont and be able to serve the people in need in Longmont. And we thank you also for all of your support. We've received support from every person on City Council and with the city staff, and we thank you for that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwina. I guess you guys better stick around for the section six where they're going to give you two checks for $5,000.
And we're ready for that and grateful for that, too.[398.19][398.19](APPLAUSE)
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the City of Longmont Airport recognition for commercial video production and charitable donations to two of our community organizations. And Tim Barth is here to introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tim Barth, the city's airport manager. I'm glad Edwina is sticking around. This is kind of going to be our own personal awards show this evening. She's going to be walking away with like two Emmys. This is going to be great for the R Center. We're here this evening to do a special presentation on an event that took place out at the airport, but also more importantly, is a way for the airport to give back to the community through this event. I think the cat's out of the bag on this particular commercial video shoot. It's been all over YouTube, and it's gone viral, and I know that The Times Call ran a great article on it. But for those that were not able to participate or might not have had a chance to hear about it tonight, they're going to get to see the fruits of our labor. We did a commercial video production out at the airport about a month ago, and we did it in conjunction with Lexus North America, Eclipse Jets, Rocky Mountain Jets, whose owner, Mark Arnold, is a Longmont resident and pilot. And we hosted it at the airport, and one of the great things that culminated out of this was two donations to Longmont charities, the R Center and the Veteran Air Lift Command. And the council had the chance to look through The Times Call in the past month. Both of those organizations contribute to our citizens here. I've got to tell you, from an airport management perspective, when Mark Arnold first came into my office a little over a year ago and said, "Tim, I think we'd like to take over the airport for a day and shoot a commercial TV video," I think the first thing I did when I got up from the floor and woke up was look at Mark and said, "I don't think this is going to happen." I wasn't quite sure whether we can pull this off because there's a lot of coordination. When Mark first approached me and I took this to the airport advisory board, we figured we would have this down in about six months. Well, lo and behold, we went to the Federal Aviation Administration, which has to provide approval, and they put the brakes on, and it turned into a 13-month-long process. And actually, those 13 months gave us a lot of time to plan it out, and it turned into a great collaboration between the FAA, Lexus, and Eclipse Jets. And one of the great things that came about that is we had to receive a waiver from the FAA in order to shoot this TV commercial. You just can't come onto an airport, close it down, and race cars down the runway and jets at low speeds. So there's all kinds of paperwork and safety parameters that we have to follow. So one of the things that came out of this is when we got the approval from the FAA to do it, we now have
I'd like to call the November 20th, 2012 Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmember Spagley.
Finley.
Here.
Levinson.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
Thank you. Let's stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard, on any items at the end of the meeting. We have...
Mayor Coombs, we don't have any minutes to present tonight. And for agenda revisions?
Yes.
Resolution 2012-98 is being added to the Agenda S consent to Agenda 9H, and I'll read the title of that when we get to it. It's about the conservation easement. And the materials were emailed to you on Friday for that, as well as supplemental materials for the urban renewal item 11A.
We have a proclamation designating November 20th, 2012, as day to celebrate our center's ethnic practices, ethical practices in Longmont. Accepting the proclamation will be Edwina Salazar. Is she here yet? Oh, yes, she is. Executive Director of our center, as well as staff members. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating November 20th, 2012, as a day to celebrate the R Center's ethical practices in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, at a time when business and nonprofits throughout the country are under increased scrutiny and competition for funding, it is vital that organizations demonstrate impeccable character and integrity. And whereas, Better Business Bureau of Denver/Boulder recently chose the R Center as the winner of the prestigious Torch Award for Marketplace Excellence in recognition of their excellent work and ethical practices. And whereas, the R Center works diligently to move people towards self-sufficiently and unifying community resources and doing the most good for the greatest number of people. And whereas, in 2011, the R Center served more than 18,000 households, or nearly 43,000 people in need, by providing life-sustaining services such as food, clothing, rent vouchers, utility shutout prevention, and more, while upholding the highest ethical standards. And whereas, the R Center's fair, honest ethical practice will make more community members aware that this organization is one that they can trust to do the most good with their generous donations of time, talent, and resources. Now, therefore, I, NSL Coombs, mayor by virtue of the authority vested in me, and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2012, as a day to celebrate the R Center's ethical practices in Longmont. I encourage all citizens in the community to be aware of this special recognition and support of the R Center. Edwina, would you like to say something now?
You gotta turn on the mic. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the city council. We are very happy to receive that award. We competed with 30 organizations in the Denver metro area for the Better Business Bureau Trust in Business Award for nonprofits. And I think we're the first one in Boulder County to receive the award. So, we're really pleased to be selected for that and to be part of Longmont and be here in Longmont and be able to serve the people in need in Longmont. And we thank you also for all of your support. We've received support from every person on city council and with the city staff. And we thank you for that at this time. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Edwina. I guess you guys better stick around for the section six where they're gonna give you two checks for $5,000.
And we're ready for that and grateful for that, too.[384.18][384.18](APPLAUSE)
Mayor Coombs, your next item is the City of Longmont Airport recognition for commercial video production and charitable donations to two of our community organizations. And Tim Barth is here to introduce this.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tim Barth, the city's airport manager. I'm glad Edwina is sticking around. This is gonna be our own personal awards show this evening. She's gonna be walking away with like two Emmys. This is gonna be great for the R Center. We're here this evening to do a special presentation on an event that took place out at the airport, but also, more importantly, is a way for the airport to give back to the community through this event. I think the cat's out of the bag on this particular commercial video shoot. It's been all over YouTube, and it's gone viral. And I know that The Times Call ran a great article on it. But for those that were not able to participate or might not have had a chance to hear about it tonight, they're gonna get to see the fruits of our labor. We did a commercial video production out at the airport about a month ago, and we did it in conjunction with Lexus North America, Eclipse Jets, Rocky Mountain Jets, whose owner, Mark Arnold, is a Longmont resident and pilot. And we hosted it at the airport. And one of the great things that culminated out of this was two donations to Longmont charities, the R Center and the Veteran Airlift Command. And the council had the chance to look through The Times Call in the past month. Both of those organizations contribute to our citizens here. I've gotta tell you, from an airport management perspective, when Mark Arnold first came into my office a little over a year ago and said, "Tim, I think we'd like to take over the airport for a day and shoot a commercial TV video," I think the first thing I did when I got up from the floor and woke up was look at Mark and said, "I don't think this is gonna happen. I wasn't quite sure whether we can pull this off, because there's a lot of coordination." When Mark first approached me, and I took this to the airport advisory board, we figured we would have this down in about six months. Well, lo and behold, we went to the Federal Aviation Administration, which has to provide approval, and they put the brakes on, and it turned into a 13-month-long process. And actually, those 13 months gave us a lot of time to plan it out, and it turned into a great collaboration between the FAA, Lexus, and Eclipse Jet. And one of the great things that came about that is we had to receive a waiver from the FAA in order to shoot this TV commercial. You just can't come onto an airport, close it down, and race cars down the runway, and jets at low speeds. So, there's all kinds of paperwork and safety parameters that we have to follow. So, one of the things that came out of this is, when we got the approval from the FAA to do it, we now have a two-year window waiver, where that waiver is approved by the FAA, that at any time the city of Longmont would choose, we could use the airport again for a commercial filming production. This time, we did it to give back to the community, but in the future, this could have some possible revenue implications for the airport, should we so desire to move in that direction. We're also now registered with the State of Colorado Film Production Commission, the state film commission. So, our name is out there, and it's just one of the ways that we can move not only the airport forward, but the whole city of Longmont forward, because the city gets a lot of the recognition. Before we get into the video this evening, there's a couple of things that I would like to point out. As you know, I am the sole staff member at the airport, but I always rely on a lot of help that I get from other city staff and council members as well. But for the past 17 years, there's been two individuals that have helped me out at the airport do everything, from the Sister Cities event to the airport expo, back to the day when we did the Rocky Mountain Regional Fly-In. And I would like them to stand up, Steve Beach and Tom Lucas. They have been with me for every event since I've been airport manager. They are the co-directors, if you will, for the expo and all the airshows and Sister Cities. And without these two gentlemen volunteering their time and actually putting up with me most of the time to make these things come together, it would almost be impossible. So, they are kind of my quasi-staff out there. This also took a lot of effort with Lexus Stevenson and Mr. Brian Landauer and Ms. Patty Ford, if you would. Acknowledge yourselves. They had an instrumental hand in getting this going and coordinating all the special events. I know everybody on the council received an invitation. I saw all the council faces out there, and all the hospitality services were provided by them. So, before I bring up Mr. Kent Stevenson, it's Stevenson Lexus to actually show you the video and take you through some of the things. I do want to let you know that within 24 hours of us shooting the event, we had over 21 separate media venues that it was posted on, recognizing the city of Longmont and the airport and the fact that we did it. And they're listed out in your council communications. So, there was quite a lot of coverage for the city on this event, and it turned out to be a real good show. So, at that, I'll turn it over to Kent Stevenson, unless there's any questions from me as a staff member.
Yeah. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I'm sure when we get to see the video eventually, will we be able to put that on the airport's website?
Mayor and Mayor Proctown, yes, we will. We'll be able to upload that up. And one of the things that we're also working with is getting the B-roll filmed, too, and all the shots that were taken that day.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much for the time. I know these are always busy schedules for you all. I'd like just to say, Mayor, to the city council, the kindness and professionalism that Tim and his crew in your city that provided us the opportunity to stage this event. I can tell you that no else in the world has something like this ever happened between Lexus and then their parent company, Toyota, has never been involved with a car and a plane race anywhere. So, you have the honor of being the only place in the world that this has ever happened. Little did I know that the complications of trying to shut down through the FAA, those who know me know I'm not a real patient person, and thank goodness for Tim and Mark Arnold's persistence that we're able to get this done. You're more than welcome to take anything that we have from a footage standpoint and all, because it was a very majestic day. If you remember, just the week before, there was snow and all of that ahead of time. So, what I'd like to simply do is show you the video that came out. Just so you know, because right afterwards, it was picked up by Motor Trend, and it was also picked up on their digital site as well. Automotive News, which is a trade magazine for automotive dealers. So, it got national press through all of the automotive circuit. Auto Week picked it up, and also automobile magazine picked it up as well. So, not only had those all gone, we're now looking to see if there's any hard copy that would be this time of year, either this right now or even January. What we can track so far that it's been picked up and viewed over 31,000 times and continually keeps rolling as it goes on. The only other situation that I know is a show called Top Gear that's done over in Europe, and they get away with all kinds of things. But I gotta tell you how grateful I am for all of you in the city for allowing us to do this, because what started out as quite a gentleman's bet between Mark Arnold, who's a Lexus customer, and oddly enough, then had the plane out here, turned out to be something that now has benefited to charities located up here in Longmont. So, very nice and happy to be involved with that. So, I'll start the video now and let you all take a look real quick.
Today, two highly advanced machines, each representing the pinnacle of engineering in their respective categories, will meet for the ultimate challenge. A high-speed race to determine which is truly the superior craft. Both driver and pilot are highly trained experts with years of experience behind them. Each expects to win, but the true test will come when the flag drops and the race begins. Attacking from the air is the Eclipse 500 personal business jet. The first of its kind, the Eclipse, represents a new generation of high-speed, highly efficient personal jet aviation capable of cruising speeds in excess of over 425 miles per hour. Thanks to cutting-edge technology, the Eclipse has the approximate carbon footprint of just seven hybrid automobiles. Defending from the ground is a Lexus LFA supercar. Incorporating never-before-seen design and manufacturing technologies, the Lexus LFA is simply a one-of-a-kind super sports car, producing 564 horsepower from its hand-assembled V10 engine, capable of reaching over 200 miles per hour. These two machines, each a masterpiece in their own right, will be pitted against each other in a one-of-a-kind race. The race will start/finish right here, with both vehicles accelerating to maximum speed before the far end of the runway, executing a U-turn and coming back to this one. At the controls will be pilot Mark Arnold and professional car driver Scott Pruitt. They'll use their knowledge and skills to push their respective machines to the edge of their capabilities. The LFA must break from speeds of as much as 170 miles an hour to execute the turn at the far end. Scott will hopefully carry a lot of speed out of that turn and really build speed on the return to the finish here. Meanwhile, the Eclipse jet will cross the starting line with 150 mile an hour head start, immediately climbing and beginning a steeply banked turn at the far end of the runway. He'll dive back down to within 100 feet of the runway and cross the finish line at full speed in the opposite direction. The first one to cross the finish line will be declared the winner. So, how does this race go about? Well, actually, it started out as a bet, a bet between two friends. In addition to being a jet charter pilot, I'm also a very loyal customer of Lexus. I was in the dealership the other day, and my eyes fell on a bright red LFA sports car, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh. That car is to cars what my jet, my Eclipse jet, is to business jet aircraft." And I thought, "Gosh, wouldn't it be great to see these two run against each other in some way?" Well, you know how those airplane jockeys are, you know, thrust this, lift that. So, I thought, "Great. You know what? I'll take this challenge, and let's have some fun with this." So, we decided to make a gentleman's wager. We bet each other $5,000 for their charity winner-take-all. He's pretty confident he's gonna win this race, but he doesn't know about aircraft that much. Just because my car doesn't have wings doesn't mean it can't fly. Guys, ready to do this?
Oh, yeah.
Sounds simple, right? But along the way, there were many hurdles to overcome. Professional driver Scott Pruitt will have only 4,800 feet to build up as much speed as possible before reaching the end of the runway. But if he pushes the LFA too fast, he may not be able to brake hard enough to make the turn at the far end, and instead could end up out of the ground. Not enough speed, and Pruitt could lose the race before it even begins. He also needs to be aware of jet one, which would cause turbulence as he's running at speeds near 200 miles an hour. For Mark Arnold and the Eclipse, the challenge will be to gain just the right speed to pass the Lexus on the first leg of the race without over-accelerating. In the jet, too much speed will increase the distance it takes him to turn at the far end. Either way, both pilot and driver will have to have ladies and sharp senses for speed and distance in order to be able to finish first. To keep the race interesting, Kent Stevenson has agreed to give Mark and the jet 115 mile an hour head start. He may come to regret that, depending on how close the race is today. The LFA is accelerating, really be able to get enough speed to avoid the jet one. The Eclipse has already made its turn, turning south away from the runway, preparing to roll and do the loop back. It's just amazing turning power. LFA must be going nearly 180 miles an hour at far end. Now, he's gotta choose his braking points to make the U-turn. The LFA has made the turn. Meantime, the Eclipse is in the middle of its own turn right now, diving back down towards the runway, right above the LFA by a couple hundred feet. Both vehicles gaining speed at tremendous rate. I can't tell which one's ahead, but right on top of the LFA, Eclipse jet. Wow, it's gotta be really close. Wow, he did it. Scott Pruitt beat the jet, the Lexus LFA.[1225.15][1225.15](LAUGHING)
Maybe we should have had Captain Bagley out there with his muscle car racing.
Well, I never get tired of watching that video. The net effect was, we won by 2.1 seconds. So, while he was going down the end, the way the runway was, he took that curve at about 78 miles an hour and was able to gain the speed on the way back. So, it worked out very well. So, at this time, if you will allow me the opportunity, I'd like to present something to Mayor you and the council, if you don't mind.
Don't take this home.
This is signed by Scott Pruitt, who has most time behind the LFA. The LFA car is there's only 500 worldwide made. There's 171 in the United States, and you happen to have two on the runway, my car and the white one. And I've never seen two of them together. So, on behalf of myself, Mark Arnold, and the Lexus Corporation, I'm walking.
Thank you very much.[1295.41][1295.41](APPLAUSE)
I've got two others, if you'll allow me a few seconds here. We couldn't have done this without the hard work. So, Tim, would you please come down? Well, we knew you were gonna fluff up your office, so we thought we'd get something from one of the walls there. So, on behalf of Brian H. Petty and everybody at Lexus, thanks for all your help. Couldn't have done it without you.[1326.78][1326.78](APPLAUSE) And last, I'd like to turn this over, give this to my good friend, Mark Arnold, who actually started this whole process. So, if there's anybody to blame, it's him. Mark, not only were you a great Lexus customer and still are, and we're still friends after this, and we'll present some checks shortly, but from me to you.
Very nice of you.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
And I'll give you the important, thank you very much for your time.[1352.41][1352.41](APPLAUSE)
Well, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to kind of celebrate the success. Longmont really is a very special place, and I think this sort of an event is just one small way of highlighting the fact that we get to do some really great things out here. And it wouldn't have happened without the support of the council. It wouldn't have happened without tremendous thanks to Tim Barth. This turned out to be a very labor-intensive process to get it done. It was a learning process for all parties involved, but we certainly... The FAA paid very close attention to this. I just want everyone to know that it was extremely well-planned. It was extremely well-rehearsed, and it went off without a hitch, I think largely because of that attention to detail in advance. The execution was flawless, except I was 2.1 seconds too slow. Other than that, everything worked out to my satisfaction. The charter business, Rocky Mountain Jet, is my business. I am the only jet charter operator at the Longmont Airport, and we're very much looking forward to continued growth and success out of the airport. And an event like this really does help get the word out. And as a direct result of this, there have been quite a few inquiries, and I'm sure there'll be more business out of that. We each selected a charity to make our payments to. So, Rocky Mountain Jet, which is my company, is donating $5,000 to the Veterans Airlift Command. My $5,000 was also matched by another $5,000 from Eclipse Aviation, which is the jet manufacturer. And just very briefly, the Veterans Airlift Command serves veterans in all communities, including Longmont. It's a nationwide organization of 5,500 volunteer pilots and private aircraft. And we carry wounded veterans at no charge to the veterans or to their families. We've now transported more than 3 million occupied miles to veterans. My most recent trip was transporting a veteran from Afghanistan that had... Unfortunately, he was a triple amputee after, and it's very difficult for gentlemen like that to travel commercially. So, we make these special airlifts available to them. And in this case, he'd been in the hospital for a year and wanted to go back to Albuquerque to visit his fiancee. And I can tell you, everybody involved in this, you know, it's just a very emotional activity that we're all engaged in, and the gratitude that is expressed everywhere we go, from the controllers. When we travel, our aircraft are carry the designation of a hero flight. And I'll tell you, you can just hear the air traffic controllers, who are a pretty hard-boiled bunch, their voices crack, because they know what it's about. So, I want to thank the city of Longmont, because all of this is a huge win-win for all parties concerned. And again, I'm very grateful to have been a party to it, and it came off without a hitch. And again, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mark and Kent. And I think the entire council would like to thank you guys for everything that you've done for the city and getting us recognition, too. So, it was a win-win for everybody. I think we've got some checks to pass up.
Yeah, I think so. And then the hits keep rolling on the video. So, I mean, we're at 30,000 now, but I think it's gonna top 100 before we're done, easily. Hey, Tim, why don't you help him?
We can do these two.
You still didn't help him.
Okay, look this way. Everybody ready? Here we go.
I expect to pick this up.
Okay.[1650.11][1650.11](LAUGHING) Our two was matched by Lexus National. (INAUDIBLE) Here we go.
The council passes this one.
Great, thanks.[1657.11][1657.11](APPLAUSE) This is for me. You guys should have tonight.[1665.11][1665.11](LAUGHING) Mayor, city council, and the city, thank you very much for all you did for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the first person on public invited to be heard is Paul Tiger.
actually was not in favor of '64, but I did vote for it. In any case, it's a law, and I've heard two police chiefs, ours, Mike Butler, and Mark Beckner in Boulder, state that they were not going to pursue these types of charges anymore. Since those statements, there I have noted, and I don't know any of these people, I can simply get online and read the jail booking report, to discover that there are arrests in Longmont for minor m... in Longmont for minor amounts of marijuana, in which people did go to jail. There could have been tickets as well, but I know about who went to the jail. And I've put an inquiry in with Joe Pelli, because what's occurred is, is that there are people who are being charged in the city of Longmont by sheriff's officers, sheriff's deputies, under the code that I believe is going to be revised. I think that these are probably pointless cases in which they'll be dismissed, or the... All that was involved here was the seizing of the marijuana. I realize that we have to wait until the 5th of January for this to become a law in Colorado, but we do have, I believe that our police chief was straightforward about what he was saying, is that we weren't going to pursue this anymore. But it's being pursued by Longmont Police Officers and Sheriff's Deputies inside the city of Longmont. And that's the only reason I'm here, to make you aware of that, and thank you for the wonderful work at the intersection of Third and Alpine.
Thank you, Paul. There's no one else on the list, so I'll close Public Invited to Be Heard.
And Mayor Coombs, we don't have any second reading and boardances or public hearings scheduled tonight, so we'll move on to the consent. First item is 9A, Ordinance 2012-81, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2012. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 4th. Item 9B is Ordinance 2012-82, a bill for an ordinance amending the 2012-2016 Capital Improvement Program. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 4th, 2012. Item 9C is Ordinance 2012-83, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.26 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Storm Water Quality, and the public hearing and second reading is scheduled for December 4th, 2012. Item 9D, there are two ordinances, both of them, the public hearing and second reading is scheduled for December 18th, 2012. The first one is Ordinance 2012-84, a bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 16.32 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code. And Item 9D2 is Ordinance 2012-85, a bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 16.04, 16.06, 16.12, 16.14, 16.16, 16.20, 16.22, and 16.40 of the Longmont Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2012 edition of the International Building, Residential, Mechanical, Fuel-Gas, Plumbing, Property Maintenance, Energy Conservation, and Existing Building Codes. Item 9E is approve and authorize the mayor to sign the 2013 Contract for Services with the Longmont Area Economic Council. Item 9F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the 2013 Contract for Services with the Small Business Development Center. Item 9G is approve and authorize the mayor to sign the 2013 Contract for Services with the Longmont Area Visitors Association. And Item 9H is Resolution 2012-98, approving the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city and the county of Boulder for an amendment to deed of conservation easement in gross. And staff does not have any items to pull.
Okay. Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move the consent agenda.
Second. All right, let's vote. All right, passage seven to zero.
And the next item would be general business, which is the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority Resolutions, and you'll first need to recess as the Longmont City Council, and then I can read the resolution titles.
Councilmember Santos.
Mayor, I would move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and reconvene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, passage seven to zero.
Okay, and let me read the resolution titles, and then Brad will have a presentation. The first one is Resolution LUR 2012-01. It's a resolution of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority adopting relocation assistance and land acquisition policy for the tax increment finance area of the Twin Peaks Small Area Urban Renewal Plan. And then the second one is Resolution RLURA 2012-02, a resolution of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority authorizing an agreement to negotiate between the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and NMMS Twin Peaks LLC related to the Twin Peaks Mall redevelopment project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the authority. I'm Brad Power, and the director of the city's economic development department, and I also serve as the executive director of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. And we're here this evening to do a couple of follow-ups. When you adopted the revised and amended urban renewal plan for the Twin Peaks Mall Area Urban Renewal Districts last month, we indicated that there'd be several items of follow-up that you would see and sit and review as the authority. And we have a couple tonight that will help us get closer to the implementation of a redevelopment agreement and an agreement for going forward with financing or public-private partnership for redevelopment of the property. So with that, I want to turn it over to David Starnes, our redevelopment program manager, who will briefly review the two items before you, and then you can ask us any questions you may have. Thanks.
Good evening, Chair of the Urban Renewal Authority and Commissioned Numbers. Two quick items for this evening. The first is a resolution of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority adopting a relocation assistance and land acquisition policy for the tax increment finance area of the Twin Peaks Mall. So, the resolution you have before you is, would adopt this acquisition and relocation assistance policies to address potential acquisition of properties by the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and to provide relocation assistance to those properties who are potentially displaced by such acquisition within the Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Project area. More specifically, these policies only apply to the TIFF area, as identified in the amended and restated plan that was adopted on October 23rd, and as there are no residential units within the TIFF area, only to business the nonprofit organizations within the area. And these policies are adopted in compliance with state regulations and provide a uniform process by which property acquisition and relocation services and assistance is offered. So, that's the first one. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions. I'm ready to move this resolution, so I would move... David, are you done with your... You're done? Okay. I would move Resolution LURA 2012-01.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The second item for consideration for this evening is a resolution authorizing an agreement to negotiate between the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and Newmark Merrill Mountain State's Twin Peaks LLC, and this is related to the mall redevelopment project. So, the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority is carrying out the Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal Plan that was adopted and approved by council on October 23rd. The Twin Peaks Mall owner has submitted a proposal to the authority to redevelop the mall by constructing approximately 440,000 square feet of retail commercial improvements and related amenities. The Urban Renewal Authority and the mall owner have agreed to begin negotiations of a redevelopment and reimbursement agreement as part of this public-private partnership for redevelopment of the property in accordance with the plan in Colorado Urban Renewal Law. And this agreement negotiated is a necessary step to assist the authority in carrying out the plan while the redevelopment and reimbursement agreement is being negotiated. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
Don't see any. Councilmember Finley.
I would move Passage of LURA 2012-02.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Chair... Mr. Chair, I would move that we adjourn as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and reconvene as the Longmont City Council.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. So, we've got final call, public invited to be heard. Wow.
Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. I just wanted to mention, I saw in the paper, the Boulder paper, that Sridar Benson and I got honorable mention as being the muckrakers of the Longmont City Council. You're welcome.
Wow, quite an honor. I guess I'll close Public Invited to Be Heard. Time for Mayor Council comments. Councilmember... Wait, nobody's...
We're all on.
Wow, we're all on. Hey, Vince, we're all on at the same time.
We can all talk at the same... We could sing. Let's sing. Try, try.
I'm on now.
So am I.
No, no, no. I think I was first, actually. I was first. I get to be the first one to say, "Happy Thanksgiving, one and all." And also, I want to thank the council members who are going to be going to Boston to represent our city at the National League of Cities. Thank you for taking time away from your families and representing our community. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to do two things. First of all, I want to remind everybody that this coming Saturday is Small Business Saturday. Shop at all the small businesses in town, and my business of the week is Crackpots. And the reason it's Crackpots is because over this long weekend, you should take your kids there to paint something as a present to give to grandma. They would really appreciate it. Crackpots is on Main Street, 505 Main Street. I know I treasure the things my children made me, and so it's a good activity for this weekend, and remember to shop local.
Councilmember Samori.
And everybody, remember, this coming Friday is the Lighting of the Tree in downtown, Sixth and Main. Come down and join us for the celebration.
At what time?
Anytime you want. Well, maybe they want to come down early and have dinner at the fabulous restaurants that we have down there, and then stop by Crackpots and do some art, and then come and see the Lighting of the Tree at 7 o'clock.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I was also, as Councilmember Whit beat us all to the punch, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Those that are leaving, safe travels for Thanksgiving. Those that are staying, it looks like we're gonna have some really nice weather this Thanksgiving, so... Yes, several of us will be traveling to Boston next week. We do not have a council meeting for those regulars that are here. You may show up, but we won't be here. Again, we will... We just got our pack up this evening. There's some really great courses for us to take. So, my understanding that we have maybe one, maybe two city staff members. I think one for sure that is gonna be presenting. Brad Power will be presenting, is my understanding, in Boston. I look forward to his presentation and other things that we can learn and we will bring back and discuss at city council. So, again, as Councilmember Samori said, 7 o'clock Friday is the tree lighting ceremony. Get there early, so you can definitely have... Go to Crackpots, go eat at the fabulous restaurants in downtown, and again, happy Thanksgiving to everybody and travel safe.
Councilmember Allison.
I'm not gonna do my turkey imitation of Gobble Gobble, though, or sing "Over the River Through the Woods." But I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Usually, we're traveling, and I'm here this year, and I also want to ask people to not only drive carefully, but watch your alcohol intake and be safe out there on the roads. I have a very... I have a good announcement to make. I received notification from the National League of Cities that I have been moved into the vice chair position for the Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, which is really amazing. I just feel very fortunate, and that means I get to work even harder. So, I look forward to everybody being in Boston, and there is a lot of very good things to learn. For those that are there Wednesday afternoon, I believe there is going to be a kickoff for... Livwell, Colorado will be there with a kickoff on the Healthy Eating and Active Living, or H-E-A-L, communities effort. The other thing I'd like to note is that the Livwell Longmont Committee had a site visit from Livwell, Colorado last Thursday, and was very successful. So, that's about it, and I look forward to seeing everybody in Boston, and let's hope our weather is halfway decent up there.
Okay, I guess I would like to, first off, thank Mayor Proton Santos for doing the tree lighting ceremony for me this Friday. That's much appreciated. I've got a lot to be thankful for. The first time in eight years that our whole family's gonna be together for Thanksgiving, because my son was spending many years at McGill University in Montreal, where they have Thanksgiving at a different time than we do, so... Also, I'd like to thank Front Range Community College for inviting me to give a half-hour talk about communications and failures and successes in it. I can just remember, you know, a year ago, I was terrified to speak in front of, you know, 50 people, and now to be in front of a couple hundred people and to talk for a half-hour and be comfortable about it, you know, this job has pushed me into... Out of my comfort zone into new areas, so it's always good when people get pushed out of their comfort zones and grow, and so I'd like to really thank the Community College for inviting me to that great, great event. Anyway, I hope everybody has a wonderful and safe holiday season. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor. The what? Tie it up. Yeah, no, the... I just want to address, I couldn't speak publicly, but I was in the paper again today.
You do that all the time.
Yeah, dude, I don't know if you read it, but couldn't talk about it. Couldn't talk... I mean, I apologize to any embarrassment that I gave counsel, my legal profession, the courts of Colorado, et cetera, et cetera. I believe Scott Rocher did a fairly good job of writing up what had happened on the day that I inadvertently was... Anyway, but the... Just wanted to say I'm sorry to... I know that people... Every once in a while, I will peruse the comments online. It's embarrassing, and so, anyway, so I just apologized for any embarrassment I gave counsel. So, that's all I wanted to say about that.
We all love you.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to you, Mayor Proton.
City Manager, any comments?
I have no comment, but Sandy has one about some information we just came up with regarding NLC.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to bring up, I know many of you are going to NLC next week, and that they'll be doing their overall business meeting kind of at the end of that week. I wanted to just make sure that you all knew that there was a resolution, that's a proposal for the general membership that has to do with hydraulic fracturing and protection of water supplies. I wanted to tell you that, just mostly to give you that heads-up, since a couple weeks ago, you all had given some instruction to remain neutral on the CML Policy Committee, and so I just wanted to throw that out there. And since I have the opportunity with the microphone, I'd like to also mention that we do have our holiday bag shopping promo, which would be a great weekend to do that. So, get your coupon at youbelonginlongmont.com, or in The Times Call, or in Longmont Life. Take it to any of the participating retailers, spend $15 with them, and get a lovely holiday shopping bag. So, just wanted to put that plug in while I'm here. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. City Attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
This meeting is adjourned.